Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Thursday, July 12. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, for everyone who attended the groundbreaking for the courthouse this morning, jackets are not required.[53.12][53.12](Laughter) So, everyone can take full advantage of that. It was an exciting groundbreaking. I don't know how many people were there. There had to be 100 or more. And so, thanks to all of those who, over the years, participated in the evaluation and the research which brought us to this point today. A special thanks to the taxpayers who supported the quarter cent sales tax. As I thought about the campaign that we were engaged in, and with the new courthouse, we had the ability to tell folks that no longer would prisoners be escorted up and down the public hallways for their court appointments. No longer would victims have to sit outside a courtroom and observe the perpetrator walk by them into the courtroom. And we would have fully accessible opportunities for those with disabilities and up-to-date technology which would help the process immensely. So, thank you all very much. For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode. We do not have any presentations to make this morning, so we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium. State your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Yes?
My name is Richard L. Gall. My wife, Donna, of soon-to-be 56 years, and I live on 183rd Street, just a half a mile west of Edgerton Road. It's Rock Road. There are four businesses west of us. Three of them are in Douglas County. One of them is Gueranger's Orchard, or whatever. The berries are in bloom now, I guess. Anyway, it's unreal, the amount of traffic goes by our house. Several years ago, the county had a dust control program. And if your house was 100 yards or more off of the road, they didn't do anything. Well, in my opinion, that worked really well. And I underst-- that hadn't been in effect for, I don't know how long. And a few years ago, we paid $3,000 to have, I don't know what they really call it, but it's kind of a phony blacktop. It's chip and seal or some-- I don't know what it is. And of course, that's not going to last maybe this year, and they're going to tear it up, and I don't know what we're going to do. I can't-- well, it appears to me, my wife, and several other residents in the area, that Johnson County is more interested in parks than it is in taking care of the roads. And I know the parks are a separate entity, but it's all county money. I can't imagine how much money is being spent on the parks down there. I drove up that Milldale, the gates were open. I drove up there the other day, I was so upset. All the money that's been spent on pavement and brick, and those bricks don't get there except by hand, as far as I know. Wow, what money they spent. And we have to put up with that dust. And especially with those businesses west of us. It wasn't near as bad before, and I hope they're all successful. I guess I'm going to end this by saying, not all that long ago, I heard our United States Attorney General use a quote out of the Bible to OK this deal to separating the kids from their parents. Well, I'm going to give you a quote out of the Bible, and it comes out of Genesis, Chapter 4, verse 9. And it's the end of that verse that I'm going to ask you to ask yourself, "Am I my brother's keeper?" And I wonder what the answer would be. Would it be if you have enough money and influence, or what would it be? Thank you very much, I'm going home.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, there's no one else to be heard, then the public comment portion of our agenda will be concluded. I do have several notes for the record this morning. I will be signing the following. An administrative resolution, number WD-18028, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and providing for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 175th Street and Quavira Road. Also, an administrative resolution, number WD-18-029, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and providing for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies to the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 159th Street and Mason Road. We'll be signing an agreement with the City of Overland Park for a preliminary engineering study of a stormwater management project known as Indian Creek South of 103rd Street, Walmer Street, and Knoll Avenue, stormwater improvement. And an agreement with the City of Overland Park for a preliminary engineering study of a stormwater management project known as 97th Street to 103rd Street, Woodson Street to Horton Street, stormwater improvements. That concludes the notes for the record. Moving to the consent agenda. Clerk, please read.
Item number one, consider approving the creation of a project account to serve as an equipment reserve fund for the Johnson County Airport Commission to be used for the replacement of aging equipment and the acquisition of new equipment, and authorizing the transfer of $250,000 from the airport's operating fund reserves for initial funding of the project account.
Any questions by the commission? Anyone present who has questions who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, it's back before the commission. Mr. Osterhaus?
Move that we approve. The consent agenda is read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda item as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number two.
Consider approving June 21, 2018, business session minutes.
Do I hear a motion? Mr. Osterhaus was absent.
Move for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any corrections or additions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number three, invitation to bid IFB 2018-029. Consider approving and authorizing an increase of $6,98,700 to the project account budget for runway 18-36 at Johnson County Executive Airport, project 350000074, increasing the budget from $343,500 to $6,442,200, and approving and authorizing a contract with Idicker, Inc., for the reconstruction of runway 18-36 at Johnson County Executive Airport at a cost not to exceed $6,98,609 contingent upon FAA grant award.
Mr. Otto.
Good morning, Aaron Otto with the County Manager's Office. As a quick review of this project, this is a complete reconstruction of the main runway at Executive Airport. It will first start with reconstructing the taxiway in order to widen it to become the temporary runway while the approximately two to three months that the main runway will be out of service. The current runway is over 20 years old, has reached its service life, and continues to be in different states of failure, so this is a great investment in this airport. This is being funded on an FAA Airport Improvement Fund grant at a 90-10 split, the 10% coming from the airport's operating fund and 90% coming from the FAA and federal government. The process was bid out. What we're doing in this motion today is increasing the project account from its original cap, which was just the design. This will now include design and construction. Number two, we'll select the vendor that was competitively bid, and it is being bid at the $6 million number, $6,98, which includes Alternative 1. We hope not to need Alternative 1. That was placed in there in case there was not suitable material to meet the base bid requirement. So hopefully, we will be paying the 5.6 number and not have to use Alternative 1. But just in case there is a need for it because of the lack of supply, that's why we're asking for the full amount here and now, and we pull the trigger on Alternative 1 if we don't have the actual asset, which is fly ash in this case. But hopefully, this will all take place, starting in April of next year and finishing calendar year 19.
And as I recall, this obviously is dependent upon FAA approval and funding?
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Otto, thank you for the presentation. You've done a good job and a yeoman's job as your dual duties have required. One clarification or expansion, if you could. What is the process if, as you say, we have to pull the trigger on Alternative 1? Is that something that you, within your discretion, or the airport boards, or is that something that will come back to us?
Since we're approving, my understanding is, and I would be happy to yield to purchasing, but since we're approving the total amount, and it won't be known until we go into the process if the fly ash is available, or if we have to go to a lime, hydrated lime substitute. Because we're asking for the full amount now, if the fly ash is not available, we will be able to execute Alternative 1, which was bid out originally, without coming back here. So it'll keep the project on time. Otherwise, we would have come back and just asked for the base bid today, and if it wasn't available, could have come back and went through the process and then started once approval was given.
But to clarify, it's under your authority or the airport board's authority?
That's what I'm getting a head nod from some other people in me.
A head nod for the director's authority?
Good morning, Chairman Ilert and Commissioners. Robin Lines, Purchasing Manager. Yes, by authorizing this action and taking the alternate 1, if the fly ash is not available, then we do have the option to go ahead and use alternate 1 without coming back to the board. The airport commission would have that option, and Erin, or the director, could sign off on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? No one to be heard, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to increase the project account budget for runway 18-36 at Johnson County Executive Airport by $6,98,700 for a total project account budget of $6,442,200, and approving and authorizing a contract with Idicker, Inc., for the reconstruction of runway 18-36 at Johnson County Executive Airport at a cost not to exceed $6,98,608.80 per invitation to bid IFB 2018-029 contingent upon FAA grant award.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the bid as recommended. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number four.
Resolution number 045-18, application number SE-CU-3393-AU. Consider request from Howard and Ellen Payne, applicants and landowners, for renewal of a conditional use permit for a private breeding kennel located at 6485 West 167th Street in Section 20, Township 14, Range 25.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Development Codes Director. This item is for a renewal of a conditional use permit that was originally approved in 2008 for a 10-year term. Staff is recommending approval. The Southeast Zoning Board also recommended approval at their meeting on June 6, 2018. They did ask that the conditional approval be for 15 years, and staff is also recommending approval of that as well.
Okay. Questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make? Okay. Anyone else like to address the commission? No one to be heard, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Klicka?
I move to adopt resolution number 045-18, approving conditional use permit renewal for a private breeding kennel for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, resolution number 046-18, application number SE-PRN2 and SE-PDP-FDP-3399-AU. Consider request from Phelps Engineering, Incorporated, applicant, and Brandon and James Hurrell, landowners, for rezoning approximately five acres from RLD Residential Low Density District to PRN2, Planned Residential Neighborhood 2 District, and preliminary and final development plan, plat, approval for two residential lots, Heritage Bend at 7848 West 197th Street in Section 6, Township 15, Range 25.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Department. This item at 7848 West 197th Street was recommended for approval by the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board at their meeting on June 6. Staff is also recommending approval of this item. It does have a waiver for the minimum infrastructure requirements to not install dry sewers. Also includes a plat exception for the, to not improve 197th Street, and also has a exception for the lot depth with ratio. That adjustment is very minor, and so staff is also recommending approval of this as well.
Questions of the staff? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Any comments they would like to make?
No comments.
No comments? Okay. Anyone else who would like to be heard on this item? All right, it's back before the commission. A motion would be in order. Mr. Klicka?
I move to adopt resolution number 046-18, approving the rezoning from RLD Residential Low Density District to PRN2, Planned Residential Neighborhood 2 District, and to approve a waiver and a preliminary and final development plan as the plat for two residential lots to be known as Heritage Bend for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations recommended by the zoning board. And I further move to approve plant exception authorization number 7-12-18A and B for the reasons recommended by the zoning board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application as recommended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, next item.
Item number six, resolution number 050-18. Consider approving to authorize the Chair and Vice Chair to award the sale of the county's general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2018A, the Series 2018A bonds, on the sale date so long as the terms of the Series 2018A bonds are within certain parameters.
Good morning, Nate Bloom, Budget Office. This item is setting the parameters for the county's GO and bond sale for wastewater projects and voting machines. It's also authorizing the Chair and Vice Chair to award the sale of the bonds on the same day as the sale. Stand for questions.
The total estimated amount of the bond offering will be what?
The maximum amount is $251,595.
Right. Okay. Mr. Allen?
I was advised I may have a conflict on one of the dates that something may need to be signed. I'm going to be out of town on August 5 through August 8.
When we get to that item, and this resolution includes a contingency as well.
Okay.
In event that the Chair and Vice Chair are not available, the Chair and then also the senior member of the commission can sign.
Four comes before five.
Always.
It's your all's job to be here, so plan accordingly, please. All right, thank you for that clarification. Again, the reason for this action is the fact that bidders who, under different circumstances, might have to tie up capital for three or four days to find out if they have won the bid, will be able now to find out within 24 hours. And so if they're not the winning bid, they can go on, move on to another project. Otherwise, it might keep bidders from participating in the bid process, so it's a good approach. Any other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bloom, could you give us a quick, high-level kind of synopsis of the certain parameters that are restrictions within these bonds?
Yeah, so the two main ones are the max par amount, which is the $251,595, most were able to issue. The most or the highest interest rate that we'll accept is 4%.
4%?
It's the highest.
Let's talk if it gets to 4%.
Well, I don't think it's going to be there.
I would hope not.
I think there's plenty of room with the 10-years, selling at about 280.
Yeah. Springsteen currently is looking at--
And again, we've got 30-year bonds, and we've got some 10-year bonds, so is that right?
Yeah. For this GO issue, which is a 22-year bonds, Springsteen is looking at 3.5% estimated tick. The max, then, what we'd be able to award the sale would be 4.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone like to speak to this item? All right, it's back before the commission. A motion would be in order. Mr. Brown?
Happy to do it, Chairman. I move to approve and adopt resolution 050-18 to authorize the Chair and Vice Chair to award the sale of the bonds to the best bidder, subject to the parameters set forth within the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the action that you requested, and the resolution noted. Any other discussion? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number seven.
Resolution number 051-18. Consider approving to authorize the acquisition, design, construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new county courthouse and medical examiner's facility, and demolition of the existing courthouse, approving the issuance of the Public Building Commission's lease purchase revenue bonds, courthouse and medical examiner's facility projects, Series 2018A, the Series 2018A bonds, provided the terms of the Series 2018A bonds are within certain parameters, authorizing the execution and delivery of a base lease and a lease with the PBC in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain other documents and taking of certain other actions in connection therewith.
Mr. Williams?
Nate Bloom with the Budget Office. This item is just authorizing the PBC to proceed with issuance of lease revenue bonds for the courthouse and medical examiner facility. The word of the bonds will be subject to parameters, and then also the Chair and Vice Chair will be authorized to award on the day of sale.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
And the parameters again?
For this one, the max amount of the bonds that we'll be able to issue is $169,450. The max tick is 3.5%. Springsteen, this is a 10-year, nine-year term, so essentially 10-year bonds, so the estimated tick is about 2.7.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Again, anyone like to speak to the commission on this item? It's back before the commission. A motion would be in order. Mr. Allen?
I would move to approve and adopt resolution 051-18, authorizing the acquisition, design, construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new county courthouse and medical examiner's facility, and demolition of the existing courthouse, approving the issuance of PBC of its Series 2018A bonds, providing the terms of the Series 2018A bonds are within the provided parameters, authorizing the execution and delivery of a base lease and a lease with the PBC in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents and other certain actions in connections therewith.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution as noted and described. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Item number eight, consider approval of a contract for county manager.
Mr. Jarrett?
Don Jarrett, Chief Counsel. Previously, the board had authorized the chairman to enter--
Microphone. Is it on?
It's on.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Don Jarrett, Chief Counsel. Previously, the board had authorized the chairman to enter into negotiations with Penny Post Oak Ferguson to serve as the Johnson County Manager. Those negotiations have now concluded, and agreement has been reached. Memorandum of the agreement has been distributed to the board, which outlines those terms and conditions. This item, then, is before you to appoint Penny Post Oak Ferguson as the county manager and to approve the contract according to the memorandum of agreement and its terms and conditions.
Mr. Jarrett, would you-- The memorandum agreement contains some highlights of the contract, which obviously would be of interest to the public. Can you just briefly name those?
Yeah, briefly, it says that she will be the county manager and perform all of the duties and responsibilities of the county manager as contained in the charter and the resolutions of the board. She will have an annual base salary beginning at $219,520, subject to a 2% increase immediately and a 3% increase at the first of the year. She will be eligible for additional compensation, which includes an automobile allowance, a cell phone allowance, and a continuation of retention bonus that she currently receives. She will also be eligible for benefits, as with any county employee, but the board will pay the employee cost for health, dental, and vision insurance. She will also have a deferred compensation of $10,000 per year. There are then terms for 14-month term for the initial contract. That is renewable upon negotiation with the board, hopefully for a two-year term. But if not, it will automatically renew on one-year terms, and there is severance provisions should it be non-renewed or there be a termination other than for some specified reasons of cause.
Should note that this contract is for a approximately 14-month period.
14-month run to September 15, 2019.
Until September 15, 2019. So, and then for that period of time. Should also note that if, in fact, there is a severance or non-completion of the contract based upon decision by the commission, that there will be administratively, immediately paid administrative leave in regards to that. Any questions? Mr. Klicka?
I do want to make a few comments here, and then be happy to follow up with the motion here. First of all, the decision that we're bringing that's coming forward to us is definitely an important-- an important decision for this county. And it's more than the, it's more important than the individuals necessarily involved. It's important to the citizens of Johnson County. As all of you know, that a few months ago, we went through quite a tough and controversial decision, and it was tough on, on many of those, both in the community and here and, here on the commission. One thing the community should be aware of is, number one, there are seven members on this commission, each of them having an equal voice. What's even more important, that each one of these commissioners represent, including myself, represent different constituencies throughout our county. We also bring various types of interests, or should I say backgrounds, to this, to this county commission. Some, some of us tend to take a little more of a pro-business or a business mentality twist. Some of us take an issue where we are extremely concerned about the taxes that, that go out, that are being charged to our citizens. Some of us are extremely concerned about issues such as mental health, JDCS, our elderly population and various. And there are other constituencies that we represent that are extremely focused on issues such as education, quality of life issues such as our parks and libraries. So this commission, each individual, one of us up here, have different constituencies we serve and different needs. And this, the county manager who is being appointed today is an extremely important part of this process. Recognizing the various constituencies and interests, it's imperative that we have an individual who's able to tie us all together, to get us to work, to get decisions such as a courthouse, new parks, deal with roads, a lot of different things that are out there that in some cases, some of us are less concerned about and others of us are more concerned about. But having the, having the leadership on the staff to be able to tie all seven of us together is extremely important. With that in mind, I think the appointment of Penny represents a good thing, not only for the commission, but also the community, but also in the employees. She represents the employees extremely well. She represents, when we get off on our tangents on certain things, she has been historically, and we've challenged one another off and on, she's been extremely good about representing the various factions of dealing with the employees and other constituents we may not be quite as aware or concerned with. And that's a, it's, she's a negotiator, and she's had a history of doing that. And with that, I think she brings that trait as it comes forward here today. I, personally, I look forward to a long tenure. You're in a tough situation, but Penny, you've, you've handled it extremely well over the years that you've been here. And I think I can speak on behalf of my other fellow commissioners that we appreciate you, even more, equally important, and we appreciate the leadership and the rest of the members of the staff. And for those that feared that the changes that have, have occurred over the last few months from a leadership standpoint, fear that this county is going to go one direction, the other direction, backwards, forwards, or whatever, as you've seen here over the last few months, we keep ticking, we keep moving forward, and we do it as a team. To my fellow commissioners, I realize it's been a tough run for us, and I want to thank each and every one of you of patience and, and contrary to what many of you may see publicly, this commission works together as a team. We have different interests, we have different priorities, but I have a genuine respect for every single one of my fellow commissioners here, and I appreciate the different backgrounds that they bring to the table. And for that, I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Okay, well, I should also note, we started a process back the first year to do a national search and a subcommittee comprised of commissioners. We went through a process of evaluating search opportunities. The decision was made several months ago to defer that process until we had at least completed substantially the budget consideration. And I think as a result of the past six months, the commission felt that, based upon the quality of, of the work that was being demonstrated by Ms. Postoke Ferguson, that to, to go out for a national search, we would probably end up in the same place that we are today. So the amount of money was not significant, but there was a slight saving. But more important than that was the demonstrated ability to, not only do the technical skills such as budget and what have you, but also to work with our almost 4,000 employees. And that also demonstrated, I think, exceptional leadership. On a personal basis, I had the opportunity to work with Ms. Postoke Ferguson for three years, a decade or so ago, at the city of Overland Park. Careful, you're dating yourself, sir. She's much younger than I am, I'll say that. And was always impressed with, with her abilities. And when I found out that she was interested in coming back from San Antonio to Johnson County, I was very, very enthused about that. So this recommendation has my full support, and Penny will look forward to a, a very, very successful tenure. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick comments. I have been a commissioner for about 18 months now, and Penny has been here the entire time, and I have watched her as we transitioned into her, into interim, I have watched her step even further forward on a professional basis and reach out to the community and to the employees of our county and to all seven of us. I have watched her as commissioners, I've seen and watched her reach out to us. I have, I have, as an experience in my life, have employed thousands of people over time. I've had the pleasure of hiring people and the displeasure of letting people go, and I have seen great people and I've seen people that underperformed. I am happy to tell you as a business owner, as a Johnson County, and as a commissioner, that I have all the faith in the world that Penny Postoke Ferguson is the right person to be the county manager for Johnson County. And you, you have all my confidence. I'm excited about this, I'm, I'm looking forward to where this leads us. And again, as, as we said, many of us said along the way, the business of Johnson County has continued to move forward, and it continues to move forward. Johnson County is on the right path. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo many, if not everything, that has been said, but I wanted to also point out, I am an enthusiastic supporter of Ms. Postoke Ferguson because I deeply respect her performance-driven bent in how she has behaved herself and directed herself and composed herself for the last several years and going forward. So I'm looking forward to great things from her as from all of us.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
I was going to simply say congratulations, it's very well deserved, and look forward to working with you.
Okay. Mr. Osterhaus.
And I'll echo those comments, Penny, it's been really good. I, I remember when you gave us your six-month review, and I was just amazed at how much you'd accomplished in those six months, and especially some things that have been very difficult and had, you know, were working, stuff that had not been accomplished for a year or so. I appreciate that and look forward to working more with you. Thank you.
Thank you, so I need to say something?
The first, the first, the big first district?
There we go, thank you.
The big one.
The big one. Penny, congratulations. It's been a pleasure to know you and a pleasure to work with you, and looking forward to working you, with you in the future on all the good things that we're gonna, we're gonna accomplish together. Congratulations.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to the commission on this item? All right, if there's no one to be heard, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Mr. Klicka.
Mr. Chairman, with this motion, I'm happy to, to see the title interim taken off. And with that, I move that the board appoint Penny Postoke Ferguson as county manager and that the board authorize and approve an employment agreement for the county manager as outlined in the memorandum of agreement.
Second.
Motion is making, made and seconded to approve the motion. Any further comments? All right, there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye, motion carried. Ms. Postoke Ferguson, thank, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
I do have a few things I would like to say. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Chairman and, and Board of County Commissioners, for having the confidence in me in this capacity. It is truly an honor to be county manager for Johnson County Government. I'm excited for the work that we will do together as the board and with staff to continue the great work that the various divisions across the county have been doing, but also continuing the work that our residents deserve and have come to expect and continuing along those lines. I would like to say a few thank yous. First of all, to the county manager's office, who all have stepped up during this interim period, and I want to name a few people because this is not just me, it's a teamwork. And first, I'd like to acknowledge Maury Thompson, who I think has already left for NACO, which we're all about to do in, in the next few hours or days. But he has stepped in as acting deputy county manager, and in addition to his already long list of duties, he also added planning department to his portfolio of, of duties. So thank you, Maury. And also Joe Waters, who took on an additional department, wastewater, just a small department and a small project called Tomahawk. So Joe, thank you for taking, stepping up and taking on those extra duties. So Joe's leading our two largest county projects ever, with the courthouse and the celebration that we had this morning with the groundbreaking and Tomahawk and the great accomplishments that we've already begun there in those multi-year projects. Erin Otto, who we have brought back to the county manager's office during this interim period, and Airport Commission and Airport Staff, who stepped up to help us have part of his time and part, partly at the airport, and then also taking on additional duties of public works and transit as well. So thank you, Erin. Cindy Green, who has taken on my liaison duties to the Parks and Rec District, thank you, Cindy, as well as her other duties and, and working with staff to help support through this transition. I don't want to forget anybody, so I'm looking at my notes. Also, Scott Newfeld, thank you for working hand-in-hand with me through my first budget to present to the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners. Couldn't have done it without you and, and the budget staff, and I truly appreciate. That was a big accomplishment for me, and I appreciate the teamwork that we did together to make that happen. Also, I would like to thank direct support from Susan Meyer and, who makes me laugh every day and makes me not take things too seriously, and Penny Pearson and Renee Murphy, who has, has supported me directly through this transition period. And I'm looking at my notes, because again, I don't want to forget. Also, I failed to mention what I planned to do first, was thanking all of the county employees for their, their dedication. We don't get the citizen satisfaction scores that we get that are top in the country without their dedication. So I do appreciate the county employees across all of our many divisions that continue the great work. And just to name a few, you know, we have, well, like I mentioned, the citizen satisfaction scores, our financial management, our credit ratings being top in the country, have the best Parks District in the country, we have platinum awards for Johnson County wastewater, and the list goes on. But that just, it just humbles me to be able to work with such great dedicated employees. My own personal support team, in addition to everyone that I've named, my husband Dwight, my motivation Peyton, my inspiration for public service, my father Wayne Postoke, my mother Virginia Postoke, who taught me how to treat people. Try not to get emotional. My three siblings, Paula Buffalo Meade, Darren Postoke, and Tony Postoke, who taught me how to be tough, because I was the littlest one, so I had to stand up for myself. They taught me how to do that, and they still do. And my friends, who are there for me to help, help me celebrate in great times and that we are there for each other through the struggles of life, and also they make me laugh every day. And so concluding my remarks, I just, I have learned so much in the six months. I've learned how you have to, have to depend on the capable people that we have in Johnson County Government, and it's a truly a team effort. And also that communication is key. I appreciate the times that the board has taken to meet with me either individually one-on-one or as a group through this transition. I think the extra communication flow back and forth amongst staff, between staff and the commission, we need to be in alignment with your priorities, and communication is key to that. So I work forward to, to working together with the board and the staff in this capacity and enhancing outcomes into the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our action agenda, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll turn to reports and communications. Once again, Ms. Postoke Ferguson.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. So you have two items in the manager's memo, you've seen these before, it's, it's dealing with the City of Shawnee TIF redevelopment district called Belmont Promenade, and that's located at South Shawnee Mission Parkway and Mauer Road on the southwest corner. So the first item is notice of approval of the district. On Monday, June 11th, following a public hearing, the City of Shawnee passed an ordinance to establish the redevelopment district. And then the second item is on a TIF plan as part of that district. And so this is a notice of public hearing. On Wednesday, June 20th, the City of Shawnee adopted a resolution to set the public hearing for the project plan as outlined in your packet, and with that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I noticed that the board can make comment, and I was just wondering if we might consider asking the City of Shawnee to consider the 90% cap for such projects that Overland Park currently has as a policy. That would be beneficial to not only the city and the developer, but it also would recognize the impact that projects like this have on county operations, particularly in the area of social services. So I just offer that as an observation and a discussion point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, again, we've had these conversations before, I think it's up to the city to make the decision that they see is appropriate for the project that they're considering. That would be my viewpoint. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Turning to commission comments, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman, just one. It's been a big day in Johnson County, and it's been all good news, it's been all exciting, and a day that I am proud to sit up here as a sixth district commissioner. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Osterhaus.
I'll echo the comments that Commissioner Brown's made about the courthouse. Been a long time coming, even before many of us were sitting here on the DS. A lot of work went into it from a lot of different people, and we appreciate that hard work that went into it. Had the opportunity to tour the Monticello Library along with the chairman and Commissioner Allen. Man, that is an amazing library, two stories, checkouts for laptops, some really great meeting rooms, really innovative things there. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, please do, I know there's some other tours going. And I believe the, it's August 4th, is that right?
August 5th, I think.
August 5th, thank you. August 5th is the actual opening at noon, so please join us there for that. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Mr. Allen.
I just second the, the comments on the courthouse and on the library, those are both obviously very important projects to the county. I'm going to do a little change, and I see Lynn in the audience and wrote an ISE article about people trying to renew their driver's licenses in Johnson County, and I actually have a couple of people approach me with different problems that they approached on it. There was something on KMBZ, and I'm going to quote, just, "Kansas drivers are being pushed to their boiling point because of long lines and our long waits at licensing offices. People in Johnson County's office in Olatha report waiting in line for several hours even after they have registered online." On the Shawnee Mission Post today, there's an article, and they're relaying to, that people are checking in online, and then when they go to get their license renewed, they're actually turned away. Their, their system doesn't coordinate, it lets everybody check in, but apparently it can't calculate how many people are in the queue and what the estimate would be. And what's frustrating about this, I had an individual tell me that he took off for work, he tried to check in online, he went to the office, and he waited approximately three hours. And I'm going to preface this by saying, employees have the right to go to lunch. I mean, there's no problem with that. He was frustrated and left after 11 employees got up at the same approximate time and all went to lunch at the same time. And again, that seems to me should be some type of a scheduling program where those could be staggered over that. Then I know another- Then I know another individual, I was approached by a young mother with three small children, was in there for three and a half hours with a one-year-old, and finally, an employee saw the situation, she had to get her license renewed that day, that finally came over and said, "Well, go ahead and take care of you." To me, that level of service is unacceptable, and I'm going to go transfer over to August 1st, the Kansas Department of Revenue is going to issue these new digital license plates, and they want us to have confidence that that's going to go smoothly. And after looking at that picture, and I mentioned this to Commissioner Brown this morning, I see nothing on that plate that is date-sensitive. They're talking about they have an inventory problem that's costing them a million dollars a year because they have to produce these plates, and they're not all being used. And again, the date-sensitive thing is a sticker. So, here we're in 2018, and I'm going to get back to and state, is I buy a new car, I move from another state, my plates maybe have expired from the other state, I don't like driving around with a temporary tag on my new car, that I'm sorry, the expectation should be that I walk into Johnson County Licensing and I walk out with a license plate. To me, it appears they have a process problem. They're not treating their customers the way they should be treated, and what's going on now is frankly unacceptable, and the volume that our offices deal with on plates is not going to be acceptable either. Something needs to happen with that. I know we're going to give them a chance August 1st, but I'm sorry, separating those license plates delivery from the stickers is not acceptable. And based on what they're doing to Johnson County residents right now, when they're trying to renew their driver's license, is completely unacceptable. So, I'd be glad to go talk to some people there.
Thank you. I have personal experience in my household with the long wait time at the driver's license, and it is, I was in a conversation last night with several mayors and a state official, this subject came up, and one of the mayors said they had tried three times to get their driver's license renewed before they were finally successful, going to the office at midday and saying, you know, "The queuing system is messed up, we have too many people, we can't take care of today, you need to come back tomorrow." And I don't know how many times that happens. So, it doesn't give one a lot of confidence that the new system, effective August 1, to get new titles and plates for a new purchase of an automobile is going to work that well. So, I'm sorry, you're right, Jim, good comments.
Chairman, I may add that staff and various members of you, of board members, have had those discussions and will continue to have that communication with the state.
And I would say this, I appreciate the communications I've seen from our Johnson County delegation. They are well aware of the state's responsibility in this area, and I'm sure will also be working hard to see what corrections can be made. So, Mr. Ashcraft?
Piggybacking on this, Mr. Chairman, do we have some kind of communications plan in place? Because as this change occurs, many people are not fully educated in terms of the difference between the state and the county, to at least attempt to make sure that there's correct venting of concerns to the appropriate parties and not necessarily to the county, if you understand what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, I know.
Do we have some kind of communication plan, or will we, and I don't want to make it overly dramatic, but if Jim Allen is half-right, and he's usually 99% right, I think we may get a lot of energy out there unless we have something proactive in place.
Well, I think a couple of things, and Jody can speak to this, but I know in conversation with Mr. Franz and on the tag issue, that there will be information distributed to individuals who come in to, they'll get their decal, and then they will get a copy of information explaining the process. But anyway, Jody?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Jody Hanson, interim director of Public Affairs and Communication for Johnson County. We have been working with TFM, we've already done a news release, and are working with them on social media and web, which we will continue to do as this launches. We've also been doing quite a bit of monitoring of social media and media because there is some confusion on what services the county does and does not do, and so, we're trying to make it as clear as we can, kind of on an ongoing basis for residents.
And that's an ongoing question about driver's license and license plates, so very good. In terms of comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you.
I wanted to, and I know this was said, but I wanted to make sure I thanked you for your leadership on the courthouse, it was a job well done, it was not an easy job, you dedicated yourself to that, and while you and I had some process disagreements, I think your leadership was demonstrated, and it has been successful and will be successful, barring anything that China may or may not do. So, having said that...
Thank you, thank you.
But I also wanted to make sure that I acknowledged Mr. Waters. Joe has involvement in a number of projects historically for the county. He's kind of building up to a crescendo of trying to spend a billion dollars in the next 12 to 18 months between the two plants, or the wastewater treatment plant and the courthouse and others. So, Mr. Waters, good job, stay with it, you're a good man, and you do good things for our community.
Here, here. Okay, Mr. Clicker?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few comments to make here. First of all, Commissioner Allen, I appreciate you bringing up the issue of this, of the DMV there. That has been a hot issue for myself. I'm one of the, I've had to deal with the headache of sitting in line, and not only worse than that, where you sit in line for a few hours, get to the clerk, and told, "Oh, you don't have something, see you later," and then having to go through that process over again. I see some heads bobbing, so I don't feel like alone in this process.
Commissioner Clicker, you did mean driver's license, not DMV, correct?
I meant the car tags. And poor Tom, and Tom, Tom's tried to keep me somewhat calm through this over the years, Tom Franzen. And the one thing he constantly says, you know, "We're dealing with the regulations as set by the state, by the Department of Revenue, dot, 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 dot." And my question is, this is not one of the core functions of the county, why are we even doing it? And all we do is get a black eye for everything that comes out of the state, but yet, they won't help us in trying to make the procedural changes and process changes to make this thing a little more accommodating for our citizens. And sometimes I keep thinking, we ought to throw this thing right back at them, let them deal with it directly, and maybe they can feel the pain that we deal with every single day as we're trying to wrestle through this with our constituents. So, we've talked about this too doggone long, something has to be set up in order to push this button and get some help. So, comment there. On a positive note, yes, this is a good day, starting out with courthouse and all the people involved from facilities, the commission and so forth. This is 15 years or more in the making, and to see that, the groundbreaking today, it's a cool thing, and appreciate everybody that's involved in that process. Some other good notes, a number of my colleagues and I will be in Nashville here this weekend, attending the National Association of Counties and looking forward to that. But also, I get to have a double hat here because I'm also on the Parks Board, and on Sunday night, the National Association of County Parks and Recreation Officials is holding their annual award ceremony in Nashville on the 15th. At this ceremony, the Johnson County Arts and Heritage Center will receive the national recognition as an award recipient for the outstanding historical-cultural facility. This is a great news, congratulations to everybody involved with the Arts and Heritage Building and Facility, and for your, which I say, the leadership coming from the Parks folks and acting as the caretakers of this facility and keeping it open and programmed for our citizens. And from the Parks standpoint, this is just only a number one of the many accolades that the Parks Department has received over the last couple of years. And Jill, and all you folks, Jeff, and the whole team over there, we're really, really proud of y'all. Congratulations. Second thing, a second or a third highlight here is, out in the southeast portion of the county, my township, Aubrey Township, Stillwell, is, has some exciting news. On the 21st of July, the Emmy-nominated hit show Mind Field is coming to Stillwell. And the TV host, Michael Stevens, who is an alumni of Blue Valley High and grew up in Stillwell, wants to extend an invitation to anyone in the hometown area there to participate and be part of a first-of-its-kind of outdoor scientific demonstration. Michael and the producers of the show are headed to Stillwell area to make a brain out of people. He's looking for 300 people, area participants, to help film this exciting experience and appear on the TV hit show. The community is getting excited about this, and what Michael is going to do is, on top of this little effort here that he's doing, this production and filming, he's also going to spend a substantial amount of time in the Stillwell community showing his hometown. It's going to focus on the new Stillwell Community Park. It's just, he's going to focus at all aspects and bring the gems of Stillwell to at least television in his way here. So, those who want to get involved, may find themselves on TV on July 21st, come on down. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Nothing more to say, it's all been good, so, thank you all.
Thank you very much. While it's been noted, we will have, many of us will be attending the National Association of Counties' annual meeting in Nashville. Should also note that on Tuesday, the 17th, we will have a special board of county commissioners meeting. We will be sitting at, as Fire District Number Two Board, and that meeting will be held in this admin building. Do we have a room? Yet?
Hearing room.
Will it be here in the hearing room?
Downstairs.
Or here, she's saying here.
In the chamber?
Right, be here in the hearing room. We do have a couple of members who probably are unable to attend, so there will be all hands on deck for those who are here. We need all five who can attend to be here for that first meeting. Just very briefly, back to the driver's license, in conversation with Mayor Copeland last evening, he said his email was full, his voicemail is full because it was identified as the Olatha Driver's License Office. And so, he said, he, yes, and he wanted to make sure that, yes, it was in Olatha, they're proud of that, but it was a state operation.
It's better than the Johnson County driver's license.
Right, right.
Maybe we ought to rebrand it.
We do not have a request for an executive session, so we are adjourned, and we'll follow with our PBC meeting. Thank you all very much.